This is the regular meeting of the city. Am I not on? Hey, Matt? Not on? All right. Right. Yeah, apparently. Little trick. All right, folks, we're going to call this meeting to order a little bit behind. I apologize for that. This is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, to be held April 6, 2021 at 6:00 p.m. And the first order of business is a roll call, and we have our clerk with us virtually this evening. She's going to take the role.
Councilmember Henry?
Here.
Councilmember Kurov?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Narin is also joining us via go-to meeting. Councilmember Narin?
Here.
Councilmember Wildon?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hulse?
Here.
Mayor Alinsky?
Here, thank you. Okay, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Next is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Do we have any council members with anything to report? All right, I've got nothing for you as well. Mr. Corbin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have a couple items tonight. The Public Works Department will be working with Franklin Striping, Inc., to complete their first application of our biannual street striping on Wednesday, April 14 through Friday, April 16. The next project I'm very excited about, about a year ago, I was told this better come to fruition, and thanks to the hard work of the team from Rudy for securing the financing, and David, and Marty, and all the people who've done the work. A ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Riverfront Trail Project will be held on Tuesday, April 13 at 9:00 a.m. at the youth ball fields parking lot just off of 10th Street over there at the Riverfront Park. So, the trail is open currently to the public, but we'll have a little ceremony over there on April 13. Very excited about that trail getting finished. The City of Cottonwood Spring Cleanup Event will be held on Saturday, April 24 and Sunday, April 25 at the Cottonwood Transfer Station. The cleanup event is open to all City of Cottonwood residents at no charge, who provide proof of residency with either a driver's license or utility bill. Parks and Recreation Manager Dak Till will have his first public input meeting with the Cottonwood Community School Student Council this morning, and then with MVP Student Council on Thursday for the new playground. So, this is the new playground going over at the kids park there by the fairgrounds. Very excited about that. We're out doing a lot of public outreach to our kids, since it's going to be their equipment. Very excited. The City of Cottonwood has partnered with the Old Town Association and the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce to organize the Rat Rod's fifth annual cruise to Old Town. So far, the OTA has shared that 70 cars are currently registered to join the outdoor car show. The event is scheduled for Saturday, April 10 from 12 to 5:00, and will be held in conjunction with the Chamber's ribbon-cutting ceremony for their new visitor center here in Old Town at 12:30. All are invited to participate and enjoy the events this Saturday. Parks and Recreation Department has launched a volunteer program to encourage community members looking to give back, an opportunity to do so in a controlled and scheduled manner. Community members wishing to volunteer with the department can apply online through the Parks and Recreation Department Connect With Us tab, where they can fill out a short application. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Okay, next we have a presentation from our Cottonwood Police Department. I believe we have Chief Gazelle here to give the annual report for 2020.
Well, good evening, Mayor Alinsky and members of council. It's, I have to say, it was a pleasure to try to find a parking place out here and see all the kids playing basketball and actually see human faces, including your own. So, very refreshing to see us hopefully coming out of this pandemic. It's my pleasure tonight, as our tradition, to present you with the 2020 Annual Report from the Police Department. As you're aware, we tie our annual report to our strategic plan, and we're in year four of a five-year plan. So, we're very excited to conclude this year and then start and launch a brand-new five-year plan. So, I'm accompanied today by Commander Garth Braxton and also Commander Chris Dowell behind me. I'm going to relinquish the podium to Commander Dowell here in a second, and they will walk you through a real brief overview of what's in the annual report. And I'm going to preface that by just touching on a few elements that are not in the report. Some challenges, obviously, 2020 a very challenging year for the vast majority of humans on planet Earth. That certainly includes residents and visitors to the City of Cottonwood and certainly members of my agency. To refresh your memory, the other day I was kind of reflecting on what happened in 2020, aside from coronavirus, right? Because that's been our general focus. And there was quite a few hurdles for us. We had the ambush and attempted murder of two of our officers, shooting of one of our officers in his road recovery. We witnessed the steady consumption from the media of broad-sweeping anti-police rhetoric, lawlessness, and a very polarized nation. We've experienced significant staffing shortages, the tragic death of Commander Jody McCouch, and of course, as I already mentioned, providing a frontline service in a novel pandemic compounded by ever-changing policy and practice. And we had it good, right? We had it good relative to many of our police agencies across the United States. And part of the reason we had it good is we operate in a community that's grateful and respectful of its police department, and for that, we are very, very grateful for that support. We do not take it lightly, and the same goes for the support of council. We're very, very grateful for your support over the last year. But despite that, we're eyes on the future, very excited, and very eager to continue our service to this fantastic community. Garth, if you could advance the slide. So, real briefly, I'll set the framework here. Our annual report objectives is to share crime statistics, excuse me, and trends. Share organizational workload programs and outcomes, and also, it is a mechanism for us to provide a level of transparency, one other mechanism, I should say, to provide a level of transparency to the community, and also update you on our strategic plan process or progress. So, having said that, I'd like to introduce our newest commander, Chris Dowell.
Thank you, Chief. Evening.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for having me tonight. I think that was the fastest. That, I think we're there. So, we moved it tonight. So, I'd like to start with crime trends. Although the coronavirus had some huge negative effects in the communities, with crime trends, we actually saw some good things. Cottonwood obviously continues to be a safe city. The COVID-19 impacts were kind of crazy for us. We saw a downturn of burglaries by 60% from last year. That's probably because most burglars don't like to go to people's houses when they're home. So, that helped us in that category. Shopliftings were significantly higher, while thefts increased by a very small margin. Reported sex offenses have continued to decline, and violent crime is down.
Next slide, please.
Drug trends. Marijuana arrests are down. Methamphetamine, heroin, fentanyl possession arrests have increased. Sales and transportation investigations involving heroin, fentanyl, and methamphetamine have increased also. We see an alarming increase in fentanyl overdoses in Yavapai County, as most of you know. In 2020, Yavapai County had five deaths of teenagers between 14 and 19. That should be striking to us. That should be something that wakes us up. We had 82 total overdose deaths in Yavapai County. Half of all were from fentanyl. And our biggest increase that we kind of saw that kind of shook us a little bit was 21 deaths in the 20 to 29 age bracket in Yavapai County. So, again, from overdoses. We're continuing to attempt to stop this with our continued partnerships with PANT and our federal partners with our large seizures. Through the annual report, you'll see some of those seizures, and some good news. Just yesterday, Officer Rowdy Scott and his new partner, K9 Auto, had their first call-out with PANT, had a positive K9 alert, and recovered some narcotics down in the Camp Verde area. So, he's already up and running.
Next slide, please.
Traffic safety. DUI arrests were up. 2020 was a kind of a weird year for us. Our average blood alcohol content for a DUI arrest was usually sitting about a .170 blood alcohol level. In 2020, it went up to the average of being a .20. A .20 is two and a half times the legal limit. That's shocking for us. That's, we're seeing a huge increase in not just people drinking and driving, but the amount of, or the amount that they're consuming before they drive, which is something that we have to try to figure out how to lower that. We have a program called Know Your Limit, and that's part of educating and saying, hey, if you're going to drink, this is about what it equates to. So, we're hoping to push that out even more this next year and try to get on top of that. Governor's Office of Highway Safety has provided some great grants this year. We had our usual Governor's Office of Highway Safety grant, and we had Prop 207. Prop 207 was from the prop position, which allocated funds to go towards enforcement. And with those, we got some more speed signs. We got another traffic trailer. On the speed awareness signs, if you've driven around town, you've probably seen three of them. We have two in Old Town, and we currently have one at 12th Street. We have one more on order, and then two more that should be here in the next few months. We're going to strategically put those across town, and we can move them as we need. They don't just provide speed as you see it, they also provide statistic information for highest speed, lowest speed, average speed, and some numbers for traffic count. Just some kind of crazy numbers. The month of March, our sign at 8th Street and Main had 119,000 vehicles pass by it in one month. 119,000 vehicles, so we're not sleepy anymore.
Excellent, please.
Training. Cottonwood PD is fully committed to leveraging mental health resources and addressing with our community partners, which is Spectrum for the most part, in addressing the needs of the community members in order to provide positive outcomes during times of crisis rather than the old fallback of inserting them into the criminal justice system, which obviously took a lot of law enforcement resources and really didn't get what we needed to get done, which is provide some type of help in order so these didn't happen again. The Mobile Crisis Team continues to be a great resource in this arena. We rely on them very heavily, and we are great partners in the field. In fact, it's almost seamless. When you're out in the field and we call for Spectrum to help us, when Spectrum shows up, they ask us a few questions, and we kind of exit stage left, and they take over, which is a great partnership, and we're really seeing some positive impacts with that. We continue to exceed industry standards for training for our employees and collaboration with our community partners. We are training yearly on adding more people to our mental health first aid and getting them up and teaching them the de-escalation techniques and to identify our people who struggle with mental illness right away. So, when we get on scene, we're not just like, ah, well, that person, you know, is committing a criminal act. We can see this person needs some mental health intervention. So, we do those things early so we can help out and get that help, and the ultimate goal is to keep them out of the criminal justice system if possible. We also started a brand-new program called our Outreach Services Officer. Officer James Rep, you've probably seen him out and about. He's been heading up our cleanup crew. He has started to collaborate with the court, Spectrum, the fire department. This is in the infancy of the program, but we're really seeing some great balance by him helping with our unsheltered population, getting them resources such as driver's licenses, ID cards, social security cards, those things that they need in order to get off of the street. Officer Rep has taken this lead, and we're hoping, well, we know it's going to help provide this mental health resource transition. Signature Programs. Neighbor Officer Program, as you know, this year we'd like to start to get a chief advisement committee, Neighbor Officer Program, with each people from the Neighbor Officers. We still have the Safe Shopper and Safe Community Program. We have the Cadets, which is a great resource for recruiting into the police department or other public safety. I was a cadet myself back, I'm going to date myself, back in the 80s, and here I am today. Citizens on Patrol, obviously, is a great resource still for our volunteers, and the amount of community volunteer hours they provide is unbelievable. They, it's, if we were to put a number on it, you'd be adding three or four officers a year for your budget purposes. That's how much they help us. Shop with a Cop. Our trunk or treat, even though it was stolen by Parks and Rec this last year, but I don't have any problem with that. National Let Out and our Law Enforcement Torch Run and Fuel of Dreams, again, these are programs that we support, and they help us bond with the community and help the community realize that we are them. We are the community, and with these programs, it helps us with that. So, without further ado, I'm going to pass this off to my partner in crime, Commander Braxton.
Thank you, Commander Dowell. Evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to continue the presentation, and as Chief Gazelle mentioned earlier, 2020 was a year of obvious challenges for a number of different reasons. And as Commander Dowell had mentioned, the priority was to continue operations as close to normal as possible. But in the midst of that, one of the important things that, at least in my time being here with the Cottonwood Police Department, was to demonstrate and show that transparency, which is critical, which is important to what we do, why, and how in terms of our operations. And so, as we go through transparency, we're fortunate to have a role of a professional standards sergeant, which the primary goal or function of that assignment is to investigate internal and external complaints that come into the police department. In 2020, we saw 12 that were initiated, and of those 12, eight were initiated internally versus the other four that came in externally. And by and large, that's generally a good barometer in the policing industry to show that internally, we're identifying those areas of concern prior to those things manifesting themselves outside in the community. So, as you look at those numbers, that's a good sign for us. And again, the goal with corrective action is similar to traffic enforcement, which is to change the behavior and demonstrate what's appropriate behavior and what's acceptable within the police department. As we transition to the next slide, continuing on with transparency, you'll see our use of force statistics, which they remain relatively low comparative to the prior year. Last year, we had 13,000 police contacts. That's where an officer is interacting with a member of the public. And of those 13,000, over 900 of them resulted in an arrest. And of those 966, only 27 or 2.8% of those resulted in some level of force, which is particularly low in context that when an officer responds, obviously, they never know what they're going to encounter. As Chief mentioned, two of our officers were ambushed, and one of them was shot last year. So, it just goes to illustrate the rate at which we're using force, which is extremely low, and comparatively, we were at 3.3 in 2019. So, again, it speaks to the level of training and the professionalism that our officers strive for each and every day, in addition to what Commander Dowell mentioned, the mental health, first aid recognition, and getting those interventions and those resources when needed. As we go on to the next slide, our Support Services workload indicators. We had approximately, we had approximately 70% of the cases cleared in criminal investigations, which are typically an arrest, a warrant being issued, or an indictment. Our victim advocate served over 200 victims, which is an impressive number, and if you've ever had the opportunity to interact with Johanna, she's frequently getting letters of appreciation and commendations for the work that she does. And we're one of the few agencies within Yavapai County that has services, which fortunately, again, for us, are grant-funded, so we're happy for that position. Our calls for service relatively remain the same, considering the fact that we were in a pandemic. We obviously don't have a choice to stop or pause our operations. We just have to adapt and make do as best we can. And our volunteer hours went up significantly in 2020 as well, up to 3,200, which is a testament, again, to a healthy organization when you have people generously coming in from the community to support your operations because they believe in the mission and the work that you're doing. And as we go into the next slide, you'll see some of our highlights that we completed, and these are examples of the strategic plan that Chief Gazelle had mentioned. These are high-level initiatives that were completed. Two of the three, the security equipment to increase safety at large-scale events, that was a grant-funded initiative that we were able to procure approximately $60,000. And then, the third one, where we acquired electronic citation software, was also grant-funded, where we received approximately $30,000. So, those are things that are highlighted in our strategic plan, which basically illustrate what the department is doing on a day-to-day basis, and it's based off industry and leading standards. So, we have a roadmap for what we're doing, which the primary example is to reduce crime and inspire a vibrant community. As we transition into the next slide, as you've heard earlier, it's been a challenging year, but the support we've had within this community couldn't be better. We have colleagues from around the state and around the country that, quite frankly, marvel at what happens to us on a day-to-day basis, particularly during the summer of 2020, when, you know, I would mention to people that were working up in Seattle that, yeah, we just had another food donation brought in. They would be in stark contrast to what they were dealing with. And so, I think it probably couldn't be illustrated any further or any more clearly than the fact that we were able to receive over $10,000 in community support by way of our local churches. So, the faith-based ministries, the ones that chose to petition their parishioners to bring and support donations, all to donate the police department and replacing our antiquated fitness equipment, you know, just clearly illustrates that level of community support, one of which, you know, I've never been exposed to in my time in law enforcement. So, we appreciate that act of kindness. As we move on to the next slide, in conclusion, I would just ask, if you have an interest, please follow us on Facebook, Twitter, or Instagram. And with that said, I think I did beat Chief Gazelle and Commander Dowell in time, so if there's any questions, I'll open it up to members of the council.
Do we have any questions from council on the annual report?
Is that text to 911 currently active?
Can you repeat that question?
The text to 911 currently active?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Well, that was by far the best annual report, I think, we've ever received. Super, thank you. It's been a really challenging year, but you guys have really stepped up, and this is a good reminder of why we live in this community, and really appreciate you and all you've done.
Thank you.
All right. And thank you, Chief Gazelle. We're going to go ahead and sneak in a call to the public here. It didn't hit the agenda. We apologize for that, but we're going to have a call to the public. We have yellow slips in the back, folks. If anyone would like to address the council, you're more than welcome. Comments regarding the items. Anyone speaking during a call of public, excuse me, is limited to a three-minute time period. And we have one gentleman here, Mr. Jones, Barry Jones, who would like to address the council.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm here in support of the Bill of Rights Resolution that we have spoken about before. Most of the information that we have as citizens... Most of the information that we have as citizens, particularly when it has to do with political things and policy, are matters of opinion. And strangely, we, we seem to have arrived in our nation to where we can't even agree on facts, let alone matters of opinion. We have a media that is driven by ideology, either right or left. And we have self-appointed fact-checkers who consider themselves arbiter of what is truth and what is fiction. All of this is very alarming to anybody that is awake. And it's totally against the spirit of the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution of the United States. The Bill of Rights enshrined non-negotiable rights for all citizens, no matter who they are, no matter what their opinions. And it says very plainly that these are God-given, endowed by their creator. These are not things that can be taken away by government, nor by any other entity, no matter how powerful they are. It's my belief that we need to stand as a community. We need to stand for one another, for all law-abiding citizens, no matter what their opinions. We need to stand to defend any that are attacked for any reason, to be removed either from employment, or to be removed from the public square. And hopefully, if we can get Section 230 repealed, to be removed from social media, which is a travesty. So I'm here just to encourage you to consider supporting the Bill of Rights resolution that some have worked on, and to be proactive in supporting your community members who are law-abiding citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Is there anyone else here this evening who would like to address the council during Call to the Public? All right, we'll move on then to approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 16, 2021, and I would motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
Okay, mayor, made the motion. Councilmember Matthews, excuse me, keep wanting to call you Vice Mayor. Councilmember Matthews, seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, minutes are approved. And we roll into unfinished business. And comments regarding items listed on the agenda are limited to a three-minute time period per speaker under unfinished business. First up, ordinance number 695, amending the zoning ordinance by amending Section 426, NF Zone, National Forest District, second and final reading. Mr. Davis, how are you?
Good, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you'll recall from the first reading, this was a fairly straightforward ordinance, changing some wording in our national forest NF Zone, removing specific references to the Prescott National Forest, since now the city of Cottonwood lies, has territory in both Prescott National Forest and the Coconino National Forest.
All right, any questions from council? Is there anyone from the public who'd like to discuss this item? Okay. I'll move to approve ordinance number 695.
Second.
Okay, mayor, made the motion. Councilmember Henry seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Curat?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hulse?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, Ms. Jimenez, if you could, please read ordinance number 695 by title only.
Ordinance number 695, in ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, amending the city zoning ordinance by amending Section 426 NF Zone, National Forest District. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And next, under unfinished business, is ordinance number 696, amending the zoning map of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, for a parcel of land, assessors parcel number 406-42-008, so as to change certain district boundaries and classifications thereof from the present zoning designation of R1 single-family residential to CR commercial residential. This is the second and final reading. Evening.
Thank you, mayor. As you stated, this is rezoned for a single parcel. Generally, it's near the intersection of North Willard Street and North Main. Currently, the zoning is R1. The new zoning would be commercial residential and allow for the combination of this parcel with an adjacent parcel under same ownership on North Main Street. Ultimate result of this would be better opportunities for development of an odd-shaped parcel in that location.
All right, again, we went over this thoroughly before, but any questions from council? Anyone from the public that would like to discuss this? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance number 696.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Wildon made the motion. Councilmember Henry seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Curat?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hulse?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, please read ordinance number 696 by title only.
Ordinance number 696, in ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning map of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, for a parcel of land, APN 406-42-008, so as to change certain district boundaries and classifications thereof from the present zoning designation of R1 single-family residential to CR commercial residential. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, next is the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. We have nine items tonight under the consent agenda. I'll read them out. Resolution number 3091, affirming the city's fair housing policy, making known its commitment to the principle of fair housing and describing actions it shall undertake to affirmatively further fair housing. Item two is extension of contract with SRE Transportation for BioSolids hauling services for one additional year. Item three is Series 6 bar liquor license application submitted by Camilla Alarcone, agent for Coyote Springs Golf Course located at 1480 West Honest Avenue. Item four is approval and acceptance of temporary construction perpetual sidewalk easement from Yavapai County for a sidewalk between the Cottonwood Recreation Center parking lot and the Cottonwood Public Library main entrance. Item five is acceptance of easements for the Mingus Avenue Reconstruction Project from 8th Street to Main Street. Item six, award of bid and approval of agreement with Judd Co. LLC for the Willard Street sidewalk improvements from Beach Street to Polis, Polis Circle. Item seven is award of bid and approval of agreement with Patriots disposal for solid waste removal services for city facilities. Item eight, award of bid and approval of contract with West Direct Oil LLC doing businesses diesel direct for city off-site fuel services. And last, item nine, resolution number 3092, approving a joint defense agreement with the town of Clarkdale, Arizona, for Cottonwood's vintage run. Are there any items that a council member or citizen would like to have pooled? All right, I'll motion then to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, mayor, made the motion. Councilmember Matthews seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, it's approved. And Ms. Jimenez, if we could, please have you read Resolutions Number 3091 and 3092 by title only.
Resolution number 3091, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, affirming a fair housing policy, making known their commitment to the principle of fair housing, and describing actions they shall undertake to affirmatively further fair housing. Resolution number 3092, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, approving a joint defense agreement with the town of Clarkdale, Arizona, for the vintage run. Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Okay, folks, now we move into new business. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. First up is a request from Terry Spalding to keep bees at the Cottonwood Community Garden located within Riverfront Park.
Mr. Mayor, council, Mr. Spalding is here, and I don't know if you'd like to hear his request first before I give the staff's presentation. That's up to you.
Mr. Spalding, are you, you're Mr., okay, come on up, sir, if you'd like, if you'd care to.
And ladies and gentlemen of the council, thanks for considering this request. I've worked with Ms. Jimenez, originally reached out to the homeowners association. I'm a homeowner in Gray Fox Ridge, and this isn't allowed. So I looked for the best group of people I could think of, which was a group of gardeners at the Cottonwood Community Garden that only seek to benefit from the pollination of these honeybees. And Ms. Jimenez and I have met and looked at a good plan, I think. And so I appreciate your consideration.
Certainly, thank you. Thanks for being here, too. All right, Ms. Jimenez, did you want to take it from here?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As Mr. Spalding said, we, we met at the garden, and you can see here, this is the northwest corner of the garden. And I outlined the area where the bee stands would go if approved. This is a 20 by 18 section. And I spoke to Mr. Spalding about the need to fence this area off, to keep a lock gate on it, just to keep people away from the bees. And then also, along the fence in this section here and this section here, putting a, a, putting a privacy barrier along those two sections. As you can see here, the new trail is behind this area, behind the fence in this area That's a closer view of it there. This is a view of that, the section facing north. The nearest plot to this area is 40 feet away, so that's a, it's a good amount of space between where the bees would be and the guard, the closest gardener. This is the back entrance of the garden, and this is approximately 30 feet away from the area where the bees would be. Again, you can see the trail behind the fencing at the back part of the garden. And there's the area closer, looking at it closer. I checked this, I checked regarding keeping of bees and any liability to the city with our city's risk manager. She didn't have too many concerns with the liability aspect of the request with the implementation of the safety precautions previously mentioned, the fence around the area and the fence barrier. And also that it be subject to his compliance with the same kinds of indemnification and insurance requirements the city imposes on other individuals who are granted special permission to use city property as opposed to general public use. I contacted all the gardeners who currently have a plot at the community garden regarding this request to keep bees. And I did not receive any objection to having beehives in the garden. The majority of the gardeners are in favor of the request due to the pollination benefit the bees would provide. I only have one gardener who is allergic to bees, but there's bees in the gardens now. But he just said he would make sure he had a, his EpiPen on him. That's the end of my presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Jimenez. Appreciate it. And I know that Mr. Spalding, too, is working with the bee guru, I think, from Northern Arizona University, if I'm not mistaken. So, seems like all your Ts have been crossed and Is have been dotted. Council, do we have any?
Yes. Mr. Spalding is in contact with the Northern Arizona Organic Bee Association. Patrick Pines leads that association. He is a PhD professor from NAU, and he offers classes and, and information and help.
All right, any questions, concerns from council?
Are we planning to post a notice of the hives?
I had not thought of that, but we can post it on the other side of the fence, along the trail and in the garden. All of the gardeners are aware that there's a possibility that the council might approve placing bees stands there. But yes, we can post notices if the council so desires.
I just think because it's so close to the walking trail, and we're inviting folks to come use that area, I think it'd just be prudent to post a sign. I understand we've, we've covered all the risk management concerns, but I think it'd be a good courtesy. Otherwise, I think it's a good project. I have a garden and don't see enough bees for my liking, and I think it'd be good to encourage that in that space.
Isn't anyone, anyone opposed to having the signage? I think it's a good idea, too. Okay. Any other questions, concerns, thoughts? All right, well, I think there's a lot of good things going on at the garden right now, and I think this would be a great addition. So, thanks for bringing it forward. And council, do I hear a motion?
Do you want to motion with that amendment for the signs? I move to grant Terry Spalding revocable permission to keep bees in the northwest corner of the Cottonwood Community Garden, subject to his compliance with all applicable laws, regulations, codes, ordinances, and under city requirements, and to post nearby signs that will alert others there are bees.
That's it.
Yeah, Councilmember Matthews made the motion, and Councilmember Henry seconded it. Could we please have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Curat?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hulse?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is ordinance number 699, affirming restoring Chapter 2.40 Municipal Court to the Cottonwood Municipal Code and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mayor and council, good evening. About a year ago, and I, I remember that because we were in this room, we, we brought to you a bit of code housekeeping about the, the general penalty provision in Chapter 1 of the municipal code. And I think at the time, we let you know that we'd be looking for other bits of housekeeping that we needed to do. And we have, just a couple weeks ago, found this very important bit of housekeeping where we need to affirm and restore from the last significant update to the code, this chapter pertaining to the municipal court, including the recently adopted home detention ordinance. And actually, that's how this came to our attention. The judge is here in, the one difference between how we're asking you to do this and how we did the, the last bit of housekeeping was we're asking you to do this by emergency clause, which senses with the need for a second reading and the 30-day effective date, so it would be immediately effective upon adoption if approved by three-quarters of the council. That, the judge is here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Judge Kelly, would you like to speak to the council?
I'm hoping that the council, good evening, mayor and council members. I'm hoping that the council remembers the original passage of the home detention order. The ordinance that covers home detention is vitally important to us, and it was very interesting that the commander mentioned what an increase we've had in driving under the influence over at .20. It's startling. I noticed it without thinking about that, just how many more people were going to be subject to the possibility of sitting in jail and then maybe losing their jobs, or being allowed to do home detention, which they pay for, we don't pay for, and keeping their jobs, thereby staying productive members of society. And so, when this came up rather unexpectedly, the judges were talking about this as a group. I double-checked to make sure we had an ordinance, double-checked with Mr. Horton, and indeed, we had one, but it had kind of disappeared. And so, he explained how that happened. We double-checked to make sure there weren't other parts of the court ordinance that had disappeared, found a few. And so, it's really just that simple. I can explain more about home detention if you want to hear it, but I don't want to bore you to death either.
Council, do we have any questions for Judge Kelly or Mr. Horton? Discussion? Are you ready, are you ready to make a motion? Please go ahead.
I move to approve ordinance number 699.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Wildon made the motion, and Councilmember Curat seconded it. If we could, please have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Counselmember Kurat?
Yes.
Counselmember Matthews?
Yes.
Counselmember Narin?
Yes.
Counselmember Wildon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hulse?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Please read ordinance number 699 by title only.
Ordinance number 699, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, amending the Cottonwood Municipal Code by adding Chapter 2.40 Municipal Court and declaring an emergency. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is ordinance number 697, amending the zoning ordinance by amending Section 405 signs. And this is the first reading. Welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. This is part of our ongoing effort to look through our code and find some provisions that are inconsistent or are unnecessary hurdles to development and upgrades of development. This one happens to affect the sign code. And this was brought to our attention by an owner of a shopping center who was asking about the possibility of putting in additional signs. And I went into some detail in the written materials you've got, but basically, we've put together a few slides that show the two changes that this ordinance would make. The first one would be currently, right now, in a non-shopping center property, you would have a, you could get a conditional use permit for additional freestanding signs. But if you're in a shopping center, under our definition, no additional freestanding sign is possible, even under a conditional use permit. So we're proposing that that be changed to allow for a conditional use permit for freestanding signs in shopping centers, just as it's allowed in non-shopping center properties. And the second change would be to regarding the height of signs, and this is regarding shopping centers and non-shopping centers, for a change in square footage in sign area, you can get a conditional use permit to change the size of a sign, but you cannot get a conditional use permit to change the height. And what we're proposing is to, again, remove that inconsistency and allow for conditional use permit for additional sign height. That doesn't give them carte blanche. That gives them the chance to apply and go before the Planning and Zoning Commission, have the Planning and Zoning Commission review it and make a decision on it. So those are the two changes we're proposing. We took this to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they unanimously recommended in favor. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions?
All right. Counsel, questions?
How much higher are we talking about letting them go?
That would be up to the, up to the Planning and Zoning Commission on a case-by-case basis.
Mr. Mayor, Gary, if I can ask, it's really meant for areas where the sign, a low sign wouldn't be readable, when there's a hillside or trees or brushes in the way, when there's stuff in the way where it actually makes sense. I can tell you P&amp;Z does a pretty good job of reviewing that. Is that one of the intents there is to?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, Manager Corbin, there's, there is a provision in the code right now that allows up to 15 feet if the base of the sign is down the hill from the roadway. So it does have that provision. But aside from that, there's really no relief in case there's, like you say, some other potential possibility out there that we don't know about that our code doesn't anticipate.
Do we have anything in the code that they can't artificially add something in the way to justify a higher sign?
Could you repeat that?
Do we have anything in the code that prevents them from adding something artificial to justify a higher sign? So in other words, if there's no tree and they're like, oh, we're going to add a tree so we can add another three feet to our sign?
I think, Mr. Mayor and Counselmember Kurt, that our Planning and Zoning Commission and our staff would be able to zero in on those types of issues. Again, these are, these would be resolved on a case-by-case basis.
Don't get any ideas over there.
And Counselmember Kurat raises a very good point. Height is something, the last time we talked about signage, it's been some years, that gets folks calling their representatives because people don't like seeing very high, you know, signs, especially if they're neon, like we just heard the reference to the Circle K sign. So I think the, I really liked the first proposed revision that we just heard, where we're making it uniform with good judgment for a conditional use permit for the shopping centers and the additional signage, again, in the exercise of good judgment. I would hope that, that the Planning and Zoning Commission and our staff would be cognizant, though, that our community, you know, we do hear it when we get higher signs, especially neon, brighter, new ones going into town. For what that's worth.
No, I think, I think you're, you know, it, we have a, you know, we have a desire to keep the monument signage here, keep signs low. I think that we, we all understand, I think Planning and Zoning Commission understands that. I would hope that that would be what we continue to do. But I can understand if there's zero flexibility in our code, that it'd be nice to have some kind of relief valve. And I think a conditional use permit would just be exactly that because then it gives the public an opportunity to weigh in, has our representatives make that decision. I guess, explain to me if counsel could be the backstop of that. Is the commission's decisions the final decision at that point?
Decisions of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Mr. Mayor, are appealable to the council. And also, the conditional use permit process requires notification to all property owners within 300 feet.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, counsel. Scott Ellis, Community Development Director. I do want to add that historically, we have a Planning and Zoning Commission who are very cognizant about signs, making sure that they don't go over the absolute highest that they need to, to get their message across. As Counselmember Henry stated, it was only a few years ago that we actually reduced the height from 15 to 20 feet down to 10. So again, we have that very consistent planning commission on sign height.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm Williams, Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Yes, we are very cognizant of this issue. I've been on the commission when we went through this the last time, a couple of years ago, to amend the ordinance is to be consistent based on where you're located and to reduce the height of these monument signs. So they won't be, we won't turn into another Prescott Valley. But we are very cognizant of that problem, and we appreciate the council supporting that issue.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Chairman Williams, for being here. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other discussion from counsel?
No. I really value signs. They're an important marketing tool for our local businesses. And so I do appreciate staff bringing these suggested revisions to counsel. So thank you.
All right. Well, this is just the first reading. Is there anyone here in the public this evening that would like to speak to this item? Okay. Then again, we'll bring this back at our next regular meeting for a vote. Thank you. And then next is ordinance number 698, amending the zoning ordinance by adding Section 428.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for the reminder. If we could have the clerk please read ordinance number 697 by title only.
Ordinance number 697, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning ordinance by amending Section 405 Signs G, Regulations Applicable to Signs in Commercial and Industrial Zones. Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Up again is ordinance number 698, amending the zoning ordinance by adding Section 428, AR-87 Zone, Agricultural Residential. And this is the first reading.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a proposal to add to our zoning code, our zoning ordinance, a new zoning classification called AR-87. We now have different flavors of AR zoning, agricultural residential, with numbers that correspond with the square footage of the lots. Currently, our largest AR is AR-70, which is about 1.6 acre minimum lot size, 70,000 square feet. 87,000 is about 2 acres. And we're proposing this to align with the county's zoning of RCU 2A, which is the zoning classification for quite a amount of the county that's surrounding Cottonwood. So if Cottonwood was to annex into those areas, as we just did in the Spring Creek Ranch area, the city of Cottonwood would have a comparable zoning to apply to the property. State law requires the city to, when it applies a city zone, to apply a zone that's comparable and not allowing greater density or uses than was allowed in the county right off the bat. So state law, in this case, it allows us to keep the county zoning in place. The RCU 2A zoning from Yavapai County could stay in place for up to six months. And that gives applicants, property owners, a chance to apply for rezones. In this case, we're anticipating an application for a PAD rezone, a fairly complex one, and it may not get done in six months. So we would like to have a 2-acre zoning in place in order to create a new, or to be able to have the applicant apply for a rezoning to a consistent zone with what's in the county right now. This proposal went to the Planning and Zoning Commission in February. There was discussion about the question of whether to allow manufactured homes as a permitted use or to leave it as a conditional use, which is the way the AR-70 zone is written. And that's what we had originally based our AR-70 draft on, excuse me, AR-87 draft on. The Planning and Zoning Commission had a tie vote on a motion to approve the version that would have, have manufactured homes as a conditional use. They voted to table it to the next meeting. We heard it again in March. Staff was instructed or requested to bring back a new version that made, made manufactured homes a permitted use, permitted outright in the, in the new AR-87 zone. That would be consistent with the RCU 2A zone, which does allow manufactured as well as site-built homes. That motion passed five to one. We have some, there was a lot of discussion on that as to whether or not that supports affordable housing and also what that would do to emergency response, fire response. There are some issues, differences between manufactured homes and site-built homes in terms of fire suppression requirements and that sort of thing. So like I said, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended five to one to allow it as a permitted use. But we do have some concerns, staff has some concerns about that. And so we've brought to you essentially two versions in your packet, one that will allow manufactured homes as a, as a permitted use, and one that would just be a conditional use. So somebody would have to, again, come to through a public process with the Planning and Zoning Commission in order to get a conditional use permit. We have the chairman on, chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission in attendance tonight to answer any questions about the Planning and Zoning Commission's discussion on that. Hopefully, I've been fairly accurate in characterizing that, but he can fill in any gaps I may have, there may be there. So that concludes my presentation.
All right. Thank you. Chairman, oh, Mr. Corbin.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to also let you know that the fire department is also here, the fire chief and fire marshal, to talk about the fire safety issues with manufactured homes in that area, in the new zoning.
Okay. Chairman Williams, if you don't mind, can you fill us in on the discussion that evening and, and what it was that the majority of the commissioners felt?
Yes. Be happy to. Kerry gave a great presentation of the proceedings. It started out that we, some of the commissioners felt we should include manufacturing housing so we're not restricting, you know, and trying to make more available affordable housing, particularly in this kind of area. We, as he said, we had a 3-3 tie, so we came back with a revised ordinance recommendation to allow manufactured homes. And the majority of the commission, including myself, I initially have voted to restrict the manufacturing homes with the concerns of its possible negative effect on stick-built houses that might be in adjoining parcels. After further consideration, the, we came back and the majority of the commissioners believed that allowing manufactured homes outweighed any possible negative effects you would have on A-stick building houses. My personal vote was from a little different perspective. In my opinion, whether you allow unrestricted or you restrict manufacturing houses on A-87 parcels is basically a moot point in this discussion. And I say that in, after reviewing the city zoning maps and all properties within the city of Cottonwood, with the exception of the Spring Creek Ranch and the national forest lands, have superior, less restrictive zoning. Downzoning to AR-87 is not very likely at all. The Spring Creek Ranch will be the only property in the city that's owned AR-87. And as everybody's aware, they're in the process of applying for a PAD zoning, allowing for much denser development, which will mean we no longer will have any AR-87 properties within the city of Cottonwood. The days of dirt-cheap land values and land splits in the Verde Valley and particularly in the vicinity of the city and along Highway 89A and 260 is over. Any future sale and development of the National Forest parcels, I feel, on the city limits as restricted, unrestricted A-87 parcels are extremely doubtful. Cottonwood's going to be just too exorbitant to divide in that manner. The big elephant in the room, of course, is the state trust land on 89A. The city and the state land department created a possible multiple-use PAD development concept for that land, if and when it's ever sold and annexed into the city. And any possible initial AR-87 zoning of that property would eventually be converted, in my opinion, to PAD zoning as development occurs over many, many years. Again, the high acquisition cost of this strategic property will, in all likelihood, rule out any economic feasibility of AR-87 zone development. I also looked at the county assessor maps for the area, and it appears to me that basically all, if not all, the county properties surrounding the city is either national forest or state trust land. And the probability of trade or sale of these parcels in the near term or foreseeable futures is probably unlikely. And again, with the dearth of large privately-owned parcels in the Verde Valley, they also make these properties quite valuable if ever sold to the, to the private sector. In conclusion, the adverse effect of unrestricted allowance on AR-87 properties is a county problem, and it really is not going to be a city problem. The Planning and Zoning Commission strongly recommends that the council approve the new AR-87 zoning ordinance as written. Thank you very much. I'll answer any questions if you have.
All right. Thank you, Chairman. Any questions for the chairman? Any questions for the Chairman? All right. Counsel, would we like to hear from our Fire Chief? Okay, great. Fire Chief and Fire Marshal are both here. Evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Thank you for having us here this evening. This is an important issue that we would like to weigh in on regarding the emergency response that would be required for an area such as this. We've had some dialogue regarding this already that's been presented, and I'll have Fire Marshal Rick Trace.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt you. If we could have our virtual attendees, please mute your mics. It would help on our end. Thank you.
Let Mr. Contreras speak to the council regarding this.
Good evening, council. Fire Marshal Rick Contreras, Mr. Mayor. So the ISO rating on the state of Cottonwood is a two, and it's because of our strong fire sprinkler ordinance we've had since July 1, 2004. If we go with the manufactured homes, we will not be able to enforce that ordinance. We had that roughly 12 years ago in our ordinance, and because it wasn't enacted in the original 2004 document, we had to pull it. So we basically had that sprinkler manufactured homes for about a year, two, I think, in town got sprinkled. So now with this, we would not have that fire protection in it. And as you know, those are the buildings that burn the quickest and the fastest. And if we're talking about these remote areas, our response time is limited. So we really, I like to say, we inspire a vibrant, safe community. We have an excellent ISO rating. We have probably the top-two fire sprinkler ordinance in the state. And so we want to keep progressing as we're growing with a safe community, and we will do, work it out any way you see fit. I support getting low-cost housing any way we can, but I don't want to do it at risk of safety.
All right, thanks, sir. Any questions for Fire Marshal?
What's the significance of the ISO two versus any other different rating?
So a two, the best is a one. And at the time we got our two, I don't even think there was any ones in the state. There was a lot of different ones. But it's, so ISO is insurance service organization. So it helps with your rates on your homes, your insurance. And so a two is excellent, and that is a big, strong part of it with our fire sprinkler ordinance. So we don't want to drop to a nine or an eight or anything like that. You know, we want to maintain our ISO rating the best we can in providing safety to the community. Did I answer your question?
Mr. Mayor, I want to, Mr. Mayor, if I can, Councilman Henry, I can tell you personally, I own a home in Cottonwood, and I own a home in Yuma. Yuma does not have an ISO rating of two. The mortgage principle is more in Cottonwood, and my insurance payments are significantly less here. So by having a better ISO rating, most homeowners enjoy a significantly lower home insurance cost.
So I just want to be clear. If we amend our ordinance, that could result in a decrease in our ISO rating, which could then result in a significant increase in everybody's homeowner's insurance premium.
I think it's fair to assume that because if we have a bigger area with less protection, I think, you know, fire protection drives that, you know, our staffing, our ladder truck, a lot of variable things, distance, I know, distance to a fire station. And then some of these areas right now, today, are far away from our fire station. So it's a longer response time and all those things. And, you know, as we build the infrastructure and we increase the city's boundaries, you know, we have to get that fire flow, that, those hydrants, that critical infrastructure that we protect the city with. So in a roundabout way, yes, it will, it will change our ISO rating.
Is that more of a concern now, though, before we actually have the infrastructure that we're in discussions with the developers out there?
It is, because we have to, we're making a zoning that is for an unknown. So it may be beyond Spring Creek, it might be other areas. And it's a slippery slope, in my opinion. One of the things, we do allow manufactured homes in lots of areas, but it comes through the development process where we can ensure that there are hydrants, that there are fast response times. So normally, when we permit manufactured homes, there's a process involved that fire is heavily involved in. If it was a permitted use versus a CUP use, fire may or may not be involved in the discussion at all. So the chances for less water, less other backups, and other safety nets is diminished.
Yeah, and thank you for that. And I was going to bring up, so we have on-the-green subdivision, non-sprinkled, but they do have good fire flow there. Pine Shadows, Mesquite Springs, some of the stuff that this council's been, and councils before, have been very directly involved with. So we do work with them, just like Mr. Corbin said. So we want to be able to continue to do this. We're not saying no manufactured homes ever. We're just, you know, we want to control and control the safety aspect of this.
Any other? Go ahead, sir.
I just don't, I know the chances are rare that we're going to see this property of Spring Creek Ranch go down the road and stay this way. I know they're planning on developing it, but anything can happen. We could also annex other RCU 2A properties. I don't want to allow anybody, I said, to just go in and develop it as-is with manufactured homes and septic tanks and whatnot. I would much rather see it come before City Council and Planning and Zoning Commission and have those communities approved. I just, I know real estate in the area, and I know all those areas that are zoned that way and then have manufactured homes. And I don't think any of us really want that in Cottonwood. We want it planned, and we want it approved. So I'm all for bringing this back with the caveat that the conditional use permit phase be implemented for manufactured homes.
Agreed.
Any thoughts?
Is there any reason we couldn't require manufactured homes in a new subdivision to be sprinkled?
The state law changed that for us. I like your thinking. And we did have that in place at one time. We were, like I said, honestly, we're very top in our ordinance in the state. It's excellent. I get a lot of Fire Marshals in the state commend us on that. So I don't think that gets enough press, enough people in the public understand that, but it's excellent. I tell people that have fire sprinklers in their home, it's like having a firefighter there 24/7, but you don't have to feed them. So that's a good thing.
Counselmember Narin or Counselmember Carratt, do you have any, anything you want to share?
I'll just chime in real quick and say that I would be more inclined to want to bring this back with the conditional use caveat as opposed to permitted uses for all of the reasons already stated.
Thank you.
I like the conditional use where we can still have a say over safety end of it.
And I would agree. I think it's more consistent, too, with the other agricultural zoning that we have in the area. And I think it may be a bit of a moot point, because I don't think a two-acre lot is likely going to have manufactured home on it, given the cost of the land. But I appreciate the commission's concern about affordable housing in the area, and it's certainly a huge concern of councils as well as our communities. And I look forward to working with that commission on finding some real solutions that have an impact here, because we all know we need, we need housing, we need it now. Mr. Corbin?
I just want to make sure, council, where you have the appropriate motion already in front of you, in your packet, so there's no reason to send it back unless you so desire. You can make the correct motion that you wish and move the process forward.
So this is the first reading, so did...
The motions do direct staff to bring it back.
Mr. Mayor and Mr. Matthews, ordinarily, when you do first readings, there's no legal action. Tonight, the difference is because we've brought it forward, wanting to give you the option of not sending it back and being able to see you next time with a second reading and adoption, we've asked you to consider taking legal action on one option or the other.
I got you. Okay. Go ahead, sir.
So then we'll make one or two, one of these, right? Okay.
Yes, sir.
So I will move to read ordinance 698 and direct staff to bring the ordinance back for a second reading with manufactured homes designated as a conditional use in the AR-87 zone.
Second.
All right, Counselmember Matthews made the motion. Counselmember Henry seconded it. If we could have our clerk, please, take a roll call vote.
Counselmember Henry?
Yes.
Counselmember Carratt?
Yes.
Counselmember Matthews?
Yes.
Counselmember Narin?
Yes.
Counselmember Wildon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Halls?
Yes.
Mayor Linsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. All right, so we'll bring that back then for a second reading. Okay, thank you. Do I need to have her, okay. Ms. Jimenez, if you would, read ordinance number 698 by title only, please.
Ordinance number 698, an ordinance to the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the city zoning ordinance by adding a new section 428, AR-87 Zone Agricultural Residential. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, folks, item five tonight is update regarding the wayfinding signage plan for Old Town.
Thank you, Mayor Linsky. We've been talking about this for a while, so let's continue talking about it. So what we've had before us in the past is sort of a lot of ideas with the entire grand plan of what Cottonwood could see. Gateway signs, you know, signs, directional signs all over the city. What we've done is sort of break that down and just come back to the Old Town area with a couple of manageable ideas and concepts just for the Old Town area. Then, as time and demand allows, we'll pursue this into other areas of the city. So some of the benefits of the wayfinding signs is identification, sense of place, the community identity, providing a unified image. And I think that's something that we wanted to focus on, was that the signs that we do begin with in the Old Town area, then would go out more into the community at large. Welcome and orientation, since we are a very tourist and increasingly tourist location, that that would help in identification. What we looked at was some of the needs of what, next slide, next slide, please. As we put up and we're proposing new signs in different locations, you know, are there existing signs that could be outdated or obsolete, need to be moved? Would there be some better location and utilization of those signs? In the Old Town area, as we sort of started getting this, we thought it was going to be clutter all over the place. It ended up not being as bad as we thought it was. There are a few public directional signs, there's some private that we can increase, but it really wasn't as drastic of a problem in the Old Town area as we thought. There are other areas of Cottonwood, we'll address that differently. Some of the cost of fabricating and installation, and we also wanted to keep it at a minimum so that as we have changes of business or go into other areas, the cost to change one of the signs is not exorbitant. So as we look at, like I said, we're just, at this point, focusing on the Old Town area. And that would include the existing commercial district, business districts and neighborhoods, there are some residential and other districts other than the commercial historic district, and also areas that are close to the commercial district but just outside of that boundary, yet still do offer a lot of commercial opportunities. Next slide. So the two types of signs, mostly pedestrian-oriented, would be located on posts or poles. What we're looking at initially would utilize existing posts and poles, keeping the expense of placing these signs at a minimum. Then also the kiosks, which we have one existing, we're proposing to add another one. I'll go into that in detail in a little bit more minute, in a little bit, in another minute. These are a few of the signs. If you look at the one on the left, there's two bus stop signs. Sort of felt, why are there two bus stop signs? Doesn't one do enough when the curb is already painted? The other was a public parking sign. These serve both as vehicular-oriented as well as pedestrian-oriented. The bottom right was something outside of the Old Town area, but it didn't create any identity for Cottonwood. It's rather generic in form. So what we are looking at is something that would be a little bit more, have a little bit more interest. So these were sort of a graphic of the idea we're looking at. The one on the left is more, a little bit more vehicular-oriented. That would be at locations to direct traffic to parking, public parking areas. The ones on the right would be more intersection and more specifically to address either individual businesses or things like municipal facilities, restrooms, parks, and the like. Next. So the directional sign locations, we didn't get real specific that we're going to put a sign at, you know, every corner. That, some of that will be market-driven for, you know, when the people come in and they're asking for a sign, when we as staff identify a location that is needing to point out some point of interest. The next slide. So we are looking at the Old Town area, not just the commercial historic district. If you look at the dashed line in the center portion of the map, that is the existing historic district boundary. Outside of that area, along the fringes, along a large area of Main Street, there is also commercial businesses that are located there that would benefit from a little additional direction of having people know that there is more if you turn right instead of heading down just the main, the Main Street. The kiosk signs, as you know, and there is one existing, so if you have any questions, that's one in front of the old jail. The second sign that we're proposing would be out here adjacent to the clubhouse somewhere. We've got a couple of different locations identified. This rendering sort of distorts the actual kiosk. What we are looking at doing is the one in front of the old jail would be used as a template to build and create the second one. So the rendering looks a little bit different, however, the ultimate kiosk would be just like the one in front of the jail. The proposed kiosk that we're talking about here in front of the clubhouse, as we looked at different locations and different possibilities, this one has the ability to, it has more space that would be visible on both sides of the kiosk. The one at the old jail, there's a map around of the Verde Valley on the backside, but it's not visible, it doesn't really help people identify much. The location here at the clubhouse, whether it be turned at a 90-degree angle to the street or located where some of that visual could be seen from the back, it gives us opportunities then to provide more than just business identification. Could you back up one? Okay. When you're looking at these, take the old jail sign, the left side is the map that identifies the business name and the map. This is specifically in the old, in the commercial historic district. On the right side, for this sign, the jail sign, has a map of the jail trail. That obviously wouldn't be needed up here at the clubhouse sign. So it allows us the ability on that right half to have perhaps some advertising, or on the backside of this, where there would be more visibility, to have flyers put by either the city, Old Town Association, the Chamber of Commerce, specifically marketing and promoting Old Town activities. So the new kiosk, we have a lot more opportunity for that. Okay, next slide, and next. So the kiosks would list the names of all the businesses in the area. We've come up with a little business registry form. We would be updating that map every three months. We'd have those forms available to the chamber, the Old Town Association, just get that out there so that when we did come up to the next quarter... out there so that when we did come up to the next quarterly update, we wouldn't know of any new businesses, remove any businesses that are no longer there. It also shows parks and trails, municipal facilities, different neighborhoods, and then also the advertising opportunities. So with that, I think we're available for any questions, comments that you may have as we move forward with this. One of the things we will be bringing back when we identify, and I talk about the advertising, you know, what are we going to charge people? That would be involved with, you know, rewrite of, or adding some things to the fee schedule. So once that, those different policies and procedures are in place, we'll be coming back to you with specific numbers of how those, how that would be implemented when somebody comes into the counter and says, "I want to put a sign up," you know, we'll have the policy there. A couple of those were included in your packet for the business registry and the kiosk advertising.
So I really like that. That looks good. I know you've been working on it for a long, long time. I was kind of surprised to see it on the agenda, but it looks good, so I just assume we're moving forward with this?
Yes, we are.
That's great, thank you. I've been spending a lot of time down here in Old Town the last couple of weeks and have given out plenty of directions to people looking for things. So I really think with as much pedestrian traffic as we have down here, it would be a help to our visitors and to our businesses.
Thanks. I, go ahead, yes, please.
I just had a question. Are you meaning the kiosk or the wayfinding signs or both?
The whole package, so, yes.
So let me clarify, I think this, Councilmember Henry, Mr. Mayor, Council. We don't have a proposal to build the kiosk yet up here, so we'll be looking for grant funding and other opportunities to build that, but we should be able to get in the budget some signage, so we'll be able to transfer our hodgepodge, our mix of colors and sizes and shapes of signs, and create a uniform sign and get those in Old Town. You know, with the bathrooms being cleaned three times a day now, and we're going to continue that, our bathrooms are presentable, and I'm actually not ashamed of them anymore. Our parking is an issue. We're going to be adding, you know, parking over the next several years, depending on the next conversation, you know, we may, we have plans for parking behind City Hall at some point when we get to that, but that's in our long-term plan, so we'll need signage for additional public parking. So looking forward to being able to appoint people to the resources they need, but we should be able to start on that in the budget process, and we'll just keep council in the loop as we actually pick the colors and some of those other details.
And thank you for that clarification. I just wasn't sure. My two thoughts were, how do we pay for them and how quickly can we get them up? So I think this looks great. I did want to note, though, just as Councilmember Matthew said, this is a really big project, and I feel just from the years that I've been on council, talking about signage, I think it's been challenging to pick a direction to move forward, and I like that you've boiled it down to, let's start with Old Town. Let's start with a place where our visitors need to know where to go, to highlight our businesses and the attractions that we have. But I also want to make it clear to the community that personally, and I can't speak for council as a whole, that doesn't mean that wayfinding signs for the rest of the, of Cottonwood and surrounding areas are any less important. To me, this is just a signal that we've got to start somewhere with limited funds and resources, and this is where we're starting as we move forward.
Agree, thank you. Yeah, I don't have anything else to add. I just, I do appreciate, too, that we're looking at the style of signs that we'll be putting up, too, because I don't think, some of the ones like down at Cove Parkway, I know that the businesses down there petitioned council to put those signs up, but they don't quite convey the character of our community in any way, shape, or form. So I'm glad that we're kind of looking at, making sure that we do convey that consistent message across town. Carry forward, I think, is the takeaway here, right?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. We'll get on it.
Find that grant money.
Well, as you know, we had grant money, but we had to change the use, the CDBG, they didn't let us use, we were going to, that's how we were originally going to build the kiosk, and we had to make that change.
All right. Well, speaking of things that we've discussed time and time again, let's move on to the last item of the evening. Item six, presentation discussion of options and direction to staff regarding alternatives for a new City Hall building. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're here again to talk about this issue. If, just bear with me, there's several of staff members worked on this particular document, and you can see it's quite lengthy, so please just indulge me, I'm probably going to read most of it so that the audience is aware of what we're presenting here. As you know, on multiple occasions in the past few years, the council has considered the idea of a new municipal facility that consolidates City Hall with a number of other city departments and services. Some council members have expressed the desire for all the city buildings in Old Town to be sold and to increase capacity for private enterprise. This would increase commercial and tourism activities in Cottonwood. Moreover, city's departure from the center of Old Town would create an opportunity for additional parking and potentially a traditional town square. Other council members have expressed concern that the city is taking on additional debt. However, at the conclusion of all these discussions, councils have not made a decision, and things have remained status quo. The city recently was approached by a gentleman named Richard Whitney, who's with us, with his lovely wife, who does business at Platinum Realty Services, LLC, although there's no record of the company by that name on the Arizona Corporation Commission database, but we're not here to discuss that. With the idea that the council has considered before, which is, of course, the city to purchase the buildout, and buildout, the large unfurnished shell building commonly referred to us as a rough cut building. This one located in the intersection of 10th Street and Main Street, and which was originally designed to serve as an upscale health and fitness center. Mr. Whitney has indicated that he is currently in escrow to purchase the entire Riverfront Commons property from Northern Arizona Healthcare, with, which purchased the rough cut building along with the other buildings and parcels that together make up the rough, the Riverfront Commons. Attached is the latest of a series of proposals Mr. Whitney has submitted to the city, under which the city would be able to either purchase the building as is, or according to another proposal, build out with desired improvements. Although the details of the buildout alternative are necessarily very preliminary, and such an arrangement presents significant, if not potentially insurmountable, financial and legal challenges. The entire building is 49,995 square feet, and based upon numerous surveys and studies, staff believes that the city reasonably requires approximately 30,000 square feet for a consolidated facility. Staff also recommends if council decides to move forward with the purchasing of the building, to relocate the police department's evidence storage facility and certain police department staff and program partners into the remaining space. The relocation of these facilities from their current locations to the developmental services, on the developmental services utility department property near Mingus and Main has been on the city's capital improvement program, our CIP, list for three years. The CIP indicates a need for approximately 15,000 square feet for this facility at a cost of approximately $6 million. Relocating these facilities and function to the rough cut building would result in significant savings over the projected cost of constructing a new evidence storage facility. Such a move will also permit the city to sell the entire property at 111 North Main Street, whereas if the evidence storage facility is not moved, city will only be able to sell a portion of that property. Currently, currently located in the utility department and developmental services properties is the evidence storage facility, police office space, community development, utility building, operations and administration, and equipment supplies for utilities. The evidence storage, police officers, police office space, community development, and utility building and administration would relocate to the new facility or City Hall. Utility operations and storage shed would relocate to Public Works Yard and their office facility. Another possible option for utilizing the remaining square footage in the rough cut building is to lease it to a third party. Mr. Whitney has identified a potential charter school to occupy the remaining square footage for an indefinite term. However, this alternative also presents certain risks, although unlike the seller buildout concept, the risks are strictly financial in nature. As noted above, attached is a financial proposal and a proposed buildout cost breakdown from Mr. Whitney. The proposal does not include the evidence storage facility option. As can be seen, Mr. Whitney's proposal is either for a turnkey project or the acquisition of the building as is. Both proposals could include the two vacant lots, will include, would include the two vacant lots at the corner of 10th and Main Street, which would be used to ensure adequate parking. The proposed seller buildout option, which again poses significant challenges that may or may not be resolvable, includes paving the parking lots, while the building-only purchase does not. Staff is not recommending any of the various seller financing options proposed by Mr. Whitney. Currently based on the proposed, on the proposal provided, $4.6 million or less, if a lower price is negotiated, would get the city the shell building and two additional adjoining vacant lots for parking. Or, if possible, $9,207,880 would theoretically provide the city with a turnkey City Hall but without the evidence storage facility. This equates to $184 a square foot, excluding the cost of adding an evidence storage facility as well as the cost of any tenant improvements needed to accommodate the prospective charter school or any other tenant. On March 31st, 2021, the city received the attached appraisal report indicating a current appraised market value of $4.65 million for the parcel, which includes a rough cut building in its current condition, which is noted as average and good. There should be a note that if you look at the proposal, it was only for the building and the property it sits on. It does not include the two properties that Mr. Whitney has proposed to give to the city of Cottonwood for parking. As part of its due diligence, staff contacted two local builders to get a rough idea on an estimate cost to build a municipal building on city-owned land. The estimates provided by these individuals range from $175 to $400 a square foot, and research into other recently constructed municipal complexes around the state suggests that the actual cost would even be considerably higher than those estimates. In either case, both local contractors did indicate that duplicating the construction quality of the rough cut building would in fact cost more than the ranges that they were giving. In addition, one builder indicated that the cost would increase significantly if the city involved an architect in a project, which it would need to regardless. Staff also asked one builder to take a look at the information provided by Mr. Whitney, which included a buildout price, the detailed buildout listing, and the conceptual floor plans in order to get their opinion on the project estimate. He reviewed the cost estimates provided by MVA, Emergent Energy and Industrial, which are also attached, and found that some cost areas, in his opinion, were too high and others were too low, but it was difficult to make accurate assumptions without an architectural On the high end, the plumbing costs provided were estimated at $362,814, while his estimate was at $105,850. On the low end, the estimated cost provided for the HVAC was $836,256, with his estimate coming in at over $1.2 million. More concerning were some of the exclusions in the proposed agreement. For example, fire suppression was excluded even though it was in the bid for $89,292. The review noted that the fire suppression system would cost upwards of $125,000. Another would be the transformer and transformer pad, which also is excluded but part of the $987,000 electrical bid. These items and others would have to be carefully reviewed and modified should council decide to pursue the turnkey project, if it turns out to be possible, which could substantially increase the costs as well. I apologize, my laptop goes crazy on me. If council directs traffic to, directs staff to purchase the buildings as is, we will negotiate the best and final price for the shell and begin the process of designing and estimating the actual cost of the buildout, and bring all that information back to council for approval to proceed. Included in any purchase agreement will be a significant period of due diligence where we would hire a design professional to begin the design process and give us more accurate estimates. I do have a note that we will have to do some inspection, due to some inspection reports that we currently have that indicate some issues with the building, we will have to do our due diligence to ensure that we get the building that we expect and that all repairs are done to it before we even move into it. And it will also be used during the negotiation process. Alternatively, if council desires staff to build a new City Hall, staff will bring options for all, for that alternative back to council at a future meeting, indicating site alternatives, a possible recommendation for selection of a construction manager at risk to design and construct a new facility on city properties. Having a centralized facility would move all city administrative services under one roof and provide centralized customer service. Operational divisions such as Public Works and Utility Operations would remain where they are or relocate to the Mingus Avenue campus. With the relocation of the evidence facility, the utility building on Main Street could be sold. However, note that the proceeds from that sale would be returned to Water Enterprise Fund, which is proper because they paid for it initially. The value of removing city functions, programs, and staff and their parking needs out of Old Town cannot be overstated, as this will allow for more commercial, retail, and tourist-based activities in, on Main Street. This would also allow for building of a traditional town square and additional parking in the area. There are some issues with each and every one of these options. Option one, this option significant, presents significant and potentially insurmountable legal and financial challenges. For example, the city cannot contract for improvements on real property it does not currently possess, either through an outright fee title, ownership, or under a long-term lease. And Mr. Whitney is not a licensed contractor in any event. Also, Arizona revised statutes, Title 34, sets out the specific ways in which the city can lawfully procure construction purposes, services, and this situation does not appear to fit in any of those alternatives, as they all presume that the city is in legal possession of property before contracting for improvements, and all of them also require some form of open competitive selection process, with final selection being based on qualifications in the case of a construction manager at risk and design-build approach, cost based on design plans and specifications in a design-build, bid-build scenario, or a combination of the two. Option two, with the rising cost of lumber, steel, and other building materials as well as labor shortages, any buildout may be costlier than we currently estimate. However, using a construction manager at risk, a CMAR process, we could shift at least some of the risk of future construction costs to the contractor. Option three, rising costs will be an issue if we delay. Also, the suggested cost per square foot to build a new City Hall facility do not include the development of necessary parking. Option four, there will be no consolidation of our services, and the cost of the building, to build a City Hall will not only cost considerably more in the future, but interest rates are likely to be rising as well. All of these options do- All of these options do require a funding mechanism. The estimated turnkey costs, currently Platinum Realty proposed $9,207,879, and mind you, this is a preliminary estimate only. Estimated empty building costs, that would be the current building proposed at $4.6 million, plus build-out costs following a competitive procurement process, and according to the ARS statutes, Title 34, current estimated costs to complete the build-out, including paved parking and an evidence storage facility, range from $6 million to $12 million for a total preliminary estimated capital investment between $10.6 and $16.6 million. A new build from scratch on our property, the building would need to be at least 30,000 square feet to meet the current and expected near-medium-term requirements. Using a $200 to $400 per square foot cost range, the cost would be between $6 million and $12 million for 20,000 square feet less than the rough-cut building and no evidence storage facility. This cost also would not include the development of the necessary parking areas. And then there's also the new evidence storage facility. PD received an estimate of approximately $300 a square foot for a construction-only total of approximately $4.5 million. The consultants also provided a total estimated all-in cost of $6.2 million for the building, design, plan review, permitting, escalation, and contingency. The majority of the funding for this project would be from the general fund. The enterprise funds would contribute to the project based on the square footage needs for their department. But regardless of the funding options, we would recommend requiring a 10-year call option on any bonds, so that we could, at our options, use funds received from the sale of other city properties to pay off the large portion of the debt at that time. A 10-year call on bonds will allow the city time to sell its excess properties and reserve the proceeds for a fiscal year 2031 call date. The GADA loan that we currently have that built the recreation center, expanded the public library, remodeled the outdoor pool, completed the ball fields, will be paid on July 1st, 2027. The $1.37 million of annual payments will then no longer be needed for that purpose and can be reserved for the 2031 call date. The total amount of funds available from that would be approximately $6,852,800. The estimated bonding range, if we do $10 million at 3.5 for a 30-year period, our annual rate, annual payment would be $538,900 annually. At a 10-year call, we would be paying off $7.7 million. At $16 million at a 3.5 annual rate for 30 years, our annual payment would be $862,000, and the 10-year call date amount would be $12.4 million. Mayor, council, that's all I have at this point. You do have several attachments on there, including the appraisal. You have a bubble diagram. You have the proposals on there, and we also have Mr. Whitney here with us to help answer questions. Thank you, Mayor, council.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Appreciate it.
I apologize having to read it, but there were so many different things working that I didn't want to miss any of them.
No problem at all. Thank you. All right. Council, let's open it up for discussion.
I like the concept of putting everything in one building. I looked at that building initially, probably five or six years ago for the shop. It was 1.2 or something like that million then. Either it didn't sell or nobody's done anything with it. So 4.6 million for an empty shell, somebody's going to have to share the drugs.
Somebody's going to have to what now? I'm sorry.
Share the drugs.
Please, yes.
Okay, I do support the concept of what we're trying to do here. We've been around to this a couple of different times, less than half the price to get started. I'm not really, I don't know where this sales number comes up with. I know you have an appraisal. I don't really care what an appraisal says. That doesn't mean that's what somebody will give you for that building. I think if we can get into this thing for $12 million or less, we're going to be good going down the road. I think if we kick this down the road, or we try to build this on our own, I know what it's going to cost. It's going to be a lot more than that. I'd like to also ask some questions of Mr. Whitney when he's available, and I really was trending towards option one, but it just looks like legally, we're not going to be able to do anything like that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Matthews, everything's in the negotiations, so there are parts of the proposal that are not legal or able to do, but those always could be negotiable if that was the preferred method. And if I can, and Ms. Horton can correct me if I'm wrong, but Mr. Mayor, if we're leaning one way or the other, and we wanted to talk about offers or negotiations, I believe we could go in, we have an offer in front of us, we could go into executive session, so that we didn't have to negotiate a price for a building in public. I don't know that that's the best way to bargain.
I don't know if we're at that point yet.
Before Mr. Whitney, excuse me, comes up, do we have any other questions or anything to share before we hear from Mr. Whitney?
I'm uncomfortable about several things, but I have, as Ron knows, I have contacted or been in contact with a builder who does several government projects. Unfortunately, I just got the information to me today, and he did it in about 45 minutes because I said I was in a time crunch. Personally, I want to talk to this guy in depth, or at least Ron and Rudy. So his costs were very reasonable. So I really question, from $6 million to $12 million, that's just a huge difference, depending on where you go. There are just too many variables right now that I'm not comfortable with.
Mr. Mayor, if I can respond, we did get that late this evening, and I shared it with my staff, and we'll take a look at that. Normally, the way a building gets built for City Council is we get direction to go build it, and if that's council's direction for us to build a new City Hall on city property, we'll bring back to you the actual cost estimates and design to build it. Until we get direction of what to do, it's really hard for us to get a lot of people to spend a lot of money to design and give cost estimates. Design runs 5% to 7% of a project estimate, and so really, I'm very okay moving forward and finding an inexpensive way to build City Hall. We have property on 7th Street, checked with our team, we can fit it on there. Parking might be a little tight, we'll have to do two stories probably, but we could fit it there. So if it pleases council, if that's the direction they want to go, give us that direction, and I'll bring back a CMR probably and a cost estimate of what we're going to do. But really, getting past this first hump has been hard to get you real good numbers. I just want to kind of explain where we're at there, that yes, they're wide, it's a big gap, 10 to 16 million, but until we have someone actually design it, I can't tell you the cost.
One question for Rudy first.
Yes, sir.
It seemed you had some concern about the LLC that's Platinum Realty Services LLC you'd mentioned.
It was mentioned in the report. I think Steve has some information on it.
I just think we wanted to make council aware of it, if the seller can't be currently Platinum Realty Services because they're not an Arizona corporation.
Mayor, council, thank you for hearing me out. Platinum Realty LLC is a New York LLC.
Sir, I'll need you to speak directly to the mic.
We're a New York LLC, my partner is on this as a California corporation, Hazling Group along Laguna Beach, California. We are the purchasers of the property.
So they would have to register as a foreign corporation?
That is not a problem.
And so you have the property currently under contract now?
Yes, we do.
For how long?
We are in day, like 50 days.
So I'm going to ask you a very direct question, I'd love for an honest answer. Do you need our participation in this to close on this property?
We have other groups that are looking at this property. Our preference is to work with the city, try to put this deal together with the city. We feel that this will be a blessing for the city, this will be a great opportunity for the city. But do we need the city to close on it?
So when is the close of escrow?
We have some extensions that we're probably going to take advantage of. We're probably looking about 90 days.
90 additional days, or we're in day 50 of 90?
90 additional days.
I have two pages of prepared notes to read into the record whenever it's an appropriate time.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Whitney?
I would like to say one thing to the price of the property. Actually, the value of the property, property going up is a blessing for Cottonwood and basically the entire Verde Valley market. That means that the area is growing, the property values are going up, and if you make this purchase, the value of this property will only increase the property values of all businesses and also homes within Cottonwood and in the Verde Valley. The first property they're going to look at when anybody does an appraisal will be this building. It did appraise for 4.6, the appraisal was done for the city of Cottonwood, and so the properties are going up in value. I understand a few years ago, four, five years ago, what the price was. That period of time, homes have gone up, business properties have gone up, values have increased.
So one more question then. Are you willing to bring us in to see what your deal is with Northern Arizona Healthcare?
One other thing, we are selling this property with the two lots. This property appraised for $4.6 million, 4.65. The two properties, we feel if we put a retail facility on there, the value of those two properties would be roughly between $700,000 and $900,000. We're willing to give that in to put this deal together, to help the city create parking and create a synergy for the city of Cottonwood.
What other similar developments or projects have you worked on with other municipalities?
We have not done any municipalities. We build multifamily, and we are currently under contract, or going under, excuse me, we are going under contract on property in Cottonwood, that we are going to be proposing 200 workforce housing in the very near future. We are working with the airport to build and create more hangars, to create more business for the city of Cottonwood. We have built, in our history, we have built roughly 5,000 apartment units. We have done over 3 million square feet of retail in our 20 years of history in real estate development in different areas of the country, New York, Florida mainly. We are here, though, I live in Northern Arizona now. We moved here, we are staying here, and this is our community. We love the community of Cottonwood. We would like to see the growth in the future of the community of Cottonwood, what it can become and what it has the ability to become.
You've had building contractors licenses in New York and Florida?
I never had contractor license. We've always, we are a developer, we always bid out our projects. We have got two bids on this project, one local named Jebco, Al Prescott, very highly recommended builder, and also MBA, Al Houston, who is also a very highly recommended developer and bonded. All of them.
Councilmember Henry, go ahead.
And I'm sorry, in our bids, I spoke with MBA earlier today before I came here after reading some of the notes. They are very confident and will stand behind their bid numbers as of today and in the very near future. Now, prices are rising, labor is rising, so if this takes too long, the numbers will increase. But they are very confident, and they will stand behind their numbers, what they have presented at this moment. As far as the sprinkler system, they did include it, they stand behind the $85,000 number. There's a riser in the building, and there is underground piping that maybe somebody was not aware of, so they are very confident in their numbers, and they will stand behind them, as will Jebco. And they're basically the same. There is very little change between the two numbers.
And thank you for that additional information. And I did have a couple of comments that I prepared, just because I didn't want to ramble and trying to be efficient. I did want to say thank you to staff. This was a very good, I thought it was good information, it was well researched, and it reflects that a lot of staff time and work went into this, and I appreciate the information. At the end of the day, similar to my comments in past meetings, we don't have the money for any of these options right now, and I am against bonding for a new City Hall at this time, and I'm also against the rough-cut building as the proposed City Hall building. My proposal is more of a hybrid of options number three and four. So again, as I've said in the past, my proposal for a new City Hall is to set aside amounts in the budget every year, increasing those amounts when the GADA loan payments end in just a few short years, and then build an appropriately-sized City Hall in five to 10 years with savings and not through debt or other bonding mechanism. I'm against debt from a big-picture perspective. When I first ran for election in 2015, I promised the voters to work to curb the city's pattern, historic pattern of spending, and what I believe to be unnecessary and sometimes unhealthy levels of debt. Not long after I did get on council, we had multiple discussions about the need to increase revenues, and we started talking about the sales tax increase. During the sometimes heated discussions and public hearings that ultimately led to the adoption of the 0.5% sales tax increase in November of 2018, I heard so many comments from folks that City Council just wanted to increase the sales tax to build themselves a big fancy City Hall building. And I was personally against the 0.5% increase at the time and advocated for less of the tax increase accompanied by increased cuts to our city's spending levels. Just a bit of history, that 0.5% sales tax increase did pass, but it was by a very narrow margin of a 4-3 vote, and that council at the time made a promise to our constituents, and the promise was to utilize the majority of the revenues towards streets and sidewalks, reducing debt, building up the city's reserves, not depleting our reserves or going into debt for a City Hall. Fast forward almost a year from that, 2018, to our 2019, transmittal from our city manager on the fiscal year 2020 budget, and he indicated in that that the preparation of the budget continues to be an extraordinary challenge for all departments. Our largest revenue sources have shown signs of improvement since 2013, partially due to the 0.8% increase in sales tax in 2008, but are not keeping up with the costs of doing business. In fiscal year 2019, with the increase of 0.5%, City Council stipulated that the majority of the revenues be used to create reserves and to fund streets projects. The 0.5% increase that was instituted has helped with maintaining city services and is allowing the city to increase reserves and to help fund some infrastructure projects. As this council is very well aware, we are still very behind target on the funding of our infrastructure projects. Our city manager, in what I thought was a very good report, continued, "Some issues are out of our control. Those issues are rising health insurance premiums, large retirement contribution increases, utility costs, and common expenditures in general." We've recently had good discussions on the uncontrollable levels of our PSPRS and the retirement funding, but I disagree with the last part of that city manager's statement. Some of our expenditures are within our control, and this is an example of such an expenditure. We do have the option We do have the option and a new city hall is a choice that is well within our control. I'm almost done. I've got one more page left. Turning to the smaller perspective and this particular building and off my soapbox against debt. I have spoken with many community members, some that live inside city limits, some that live outside. Concerns with this particular project that I've heard, it's not a viable option. Too much money, overarching concern that it will most likely cost more than we are estimating. I heard we don't want another riverfront wastewater treatment plant, which was well over budget and still not functional. I have heard concerns that we're buying at the height of a seller's market. Parking issues which have been partially addressed with the two lots, but not fully addressed with regard to what that looks like for the additional police vehicles. Then also, we already have significant traffic and congestion issues already at riverfront. Another couple of folks have said, "We have so many more pressing priorities." I'd like to just also address the suggestion about combining the evidence facility into city hall. Personally, spending millions of dollars on a new evidence facility should not be a priority for the city right now. Even if it were, I don't believe that the rough cut location is appropriate for an evidence facility. I was recently inside, in the last month, an evidence facility spoke with the lieutenant of a neighboring law enforcement organization about the needs, the use and the components of that particular evidence facility. And rough cut does not have these components. It's going to cost a lot of money to try to rig some of the components either into the rough cut building or later build them into a later also needed facility in order to address what I'm told are modern trends in evidence facilities. The city doesn't have control over some things like we heard, the health insurance, the retirement, increased costs. But again, this one is squarely within our control and my preference is again, that we do make a decision tonight or in the next few months, but that that decision be to, to proceed without additional bonding or debt. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, would anyone else care to weigh in?
It's definitely going to get more expensive to build it and we're going to outgrow where we are now. Kind of like option three with seeing what we have and what it costs to build on what we have.
All right. Councilmember Naren, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I, I agree that we need to make a decision on moving forward with an option for, for a new city hall. We do have a need for one and consolidating services in a one location, I believe is very important. But I'm, I'm gravitating towards option three at this point. I, I think there's just too, too much risk with the rough cut building and I think building on our own property might be the way to.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, let's give Vice Mayor a chance.
I'm inclined to say we need a new city hall. I'm not inclined to say that we need to jump into something immediately. I concur with Councilmember Henry. I've heard a lot of complaints about us building or using rough cut, that it will simply create a traffic problem in Old Town. That it's not a good building for our purpose. We want 30,000. This is 50,000 feet. It's almost double the size that we need. If, when we say the foreseeable future, if we're talking the next 10, 15 years after build, 30,000 is a reasonable size and will allow to be paid off and advance more funding to expand onto that city hall as time goes by and we need more room. So I would, I, I'm uncomfortable with the way things are at the moment. I'm not sure I want to jump into something tonight or in the next few days. I'm, I'm just real uncomfortable with the way things are. And I think we need to have more information than what we've got tonight.
Councilmember Wildin, I think you made your, your point clear. Are there any options that you're gravitating towards or you just would like more time as well?
Well, if we go with option three, that's going to cost us some money. And I don't know that we're there yet. Is that correct?
But I have to spend money to bring back the answers you're looking for. We have spent money in the past on bubble diagrams and room estimates and size estimates. The way you build a building is have someone design it for you. We have sold two pieces of property. We have almost a million dollars in the bank. That, one of the other issues that often comes up is it's not budgeted. We now have a million dollars set aside for a future city hall as directed by staff from selling the property on Sixth Street and selling the old finance building. We can use that money in next year's budget to design a new city hall on city property if option three is what you want. Counsel will have input when we bring back design options and locations and those kinds of things as we move along and figure out how to build it. But we, we do need to pay someone to design, really design of, to build a, a city hall. And Mr. Hozerman, our public works manager is here tonight. He can help talk about some of those processes. But I believe the number is 5% to 7% of estimated cost. And as a matter of fact, the numbers you sent, I think we're close to that for design that you sent today. That we just have to, we, we just need direction on, on how to set up the budget. That's the other thing is we have budget hearings at the end of the month, 27th and 28th. And this is the time to put it in next year's budget for a design, not build, if, if we want to move forward. So again, I love my office. This is not about me. This is, you know, just a strategic decision by council on whether we move forward with the consolidated offices or not. I probably can sell one more building, maybe one and a half, but we're, we're crammed. There's not a whole lot of space left to move people into. There's no other place to put HR, finance, purchasing, city administration, economic development without a new building. So I'm running, I, I think we've done well over the couple of years I've been here about consolidating, selling property and making things happen. I'm good. I just, I don't have many other tricks in my hat to do much more consolidating. Again, this is really just a, a decision by council to tell us which direction. Option four is on the table. We're very happy and, and I can move forward. So this is really up to, to the elected body.
Mayor, may I, may I, may I, just, just see, just for a note, to compare apples to apples, I know that we've been all looking at someone to build something for us on our property. The, the one suggestion, the one thing we need to consider when you talk to rough cut building is it's not the building alone. It's actually the property itself. So to say, look at numbers, just to look at numbers is not apples and apples comparison. Just food for thought.
Okay, just my last thoughts on this, just to go on record as I watch this process go through the many years that I'm sitting in my easy chair. Is, this is my third go around with this. And, and this rough cut building itself now is over twice as much what we were talking about purchasing it for just only two years ago. It's a 50,000 square foot building in Cottonwood. I think we're the only ones that could even use it. If, if there's somebody out there, which we've been told there has been for that same two-year period and they've never come along, well then that's fine. I agree with Councilman Henry's sentiments and, and I understand that. But we are a growing city and we're going to be growing a lot here soon in the future. We're tripping all over ourselves down here in Old Town and, and we're just in the way. We do need to do something. But I don't think you're going to get a council that's going to make it happen. You're going to continue to grow and you're going to start tripping over yourselves really badly. The price of this is only going to go up. We're kicking the can down the road, just like these state retirement systems. And it's only going to cost a lot more money and we'll never save enough to get there. I understand that. I like that idea. I like saving the money, putting it away and going for it in the future. So I just don't think you're going to get a council that's willing to step up and, and hit the ball. And I think you're going to be dealing with this for a long time. I think that what we're talking about here and the numbers is still doable. And bonding, I mean, that's just the way it works. You have to finance it. There's, I don't think there's any other way of doing this for a municipality. We're saving $10 million on the retirement system. And I think it all makes sense in the long run. I understand the sentiment against it. I do. But like I said, I'm, I wasn't looking for this to come up again. I'm, I'm always supportive of it because I think it just makes sense for the future. So I'll, I'll support anything that somebody comes up with and I, I understand that it's difficult to come up with a number. But it's also difficult to commit when you don't have a number because we do have a history of of some bad decisions in the past that have not turned out very well. So that's all I've got to say on it. Thanks.
All right.
Well, May I please say one more thing?
Mr. Whitney, go ahead.
The prices are going to go up to the, the, this building right now to replace what is there would cost well over $7 million. They have $12 million invested into the property before it was foreclosed upon. So this, the, the property values are going to go up and the main thing right now, why this is a good deal today is interest rates. Interest rates are going to rise. Our federal government cannot keep throwing all this money out, not keep having our interest rates stay low. They're going to rise. And the purchase of this building would open up commerce for, more commerce for downtown, more businesses moving in, more revenue coming in for the city. It would, it will also create a aura for Cottonwood that you are growing, this, that you have this facility that is open for, that you are open for business. Plus, you don't have to use the whole 50,000 square foot. We, we'd have a, a tenant that we have discussed with for this building that they would love it. They would like to be in partners with the city. There are other, I'm sure, organizations that would love to be in partnership with the city that can take out, they can take on a lot of the debt as far as paying, as far as paying you right to help with debt service. That's definitely a possibility. The tenant that we, the tenant that we have discussed, they're ready to move on, they're, they're ready to move on this facility. No doubt. And they would be a good mix for the city. They would not take a lot of parking. And they would be a, they're a good additive to this building and to the area of North Main Street.
Thank you, sir.
We only need 30,000 square feet. We don't need the whole building. Secondly, I'm not in favor of the proposed other tenant. I don't think that's appropriate for us. So, um, I would be willing to go option three if we have the money and we need to design something anyway, if that's the case.
All right. Well, I'm a little envious of Councilmember Matthews. You've only been around this horn three times. I, I've said 100 different ways why I support. I think it's a good idea that we try to purchase the rough cut building. So I'm not going to go into that. Much more, I liked the deal many years ago when it was a lot less expensive. I still think it's negotiable and workable, option two. But if option three is the direction that most of the council is moving towards or comfortable with, then I, I'd be perfectly fine with that as well. I just feel like inaction is, is a disservice. I think that the, the time to strike is now, in my opinion. Because interest rates are so low, because the need is so great, because we are hogging up a lot of valuable real estate that could otherwise be in the hands of private businesses and creating a, again, just that more vibrant downtown. I think the reason why I really like that location is because I think it would anchor the other end of Old Town and provide a quicker expansion of our arts, culture and entertainment district. But by all means, if, if we want to look at property that we own, I think the CMAR way to procure this is, is the way to go, definitely. And I'm all for that as well. I think just moving forward with something is, is important. I do think that even if we look at property that we own, the, the cost is going to be greater than the deal we'd get. Even with the increased cost of rough cut, I do believe that. But, but that, that is what, that is what it is. This, this council is.
The fact is, that's, that's really an unknown. Because what, the figures I've got here are less than that, than, than buying it. Plus the fact it's, we only need 30,000 square feet. So 30,000 times this figure is a lot less. It's in, he did it in 45 minutes. So, I mean, his figures, if you want to know, for a two-story type two would be $192 a square foot. Uh, it's a company called Cordy. They do a number of government buildings all over the United States. They've got them in Arizona. And I just think, I would like to pursue that.
Can I clarify? So you're stating that you can get a 30,000 square foot building built cheaper than the $50,000 rough cut?
Basically, based on these figures, yes, it makes sense to me.
I think, can't even build a house for that, for those numbers right now. I don't know.
That's not including the land.
Commercial.
That's not including the land.
Yeah, I don't, um, I mean, right now I'm quoting building costs on your land, a residential home at 250 a square foot. And, and commercial gets, gets seriously above that. So, okay.
Mr. Mayor, we got the numbers late this afternoon. I sent my team. Those numbers haven't been vetted, but they're in line with some of the lower numbers that one of our local contractors provided us. I just think that it is dangerous to throw out those low numbers. I, I'm just speaking from my experience, they're low. They're low for a city hall. They're, they're low for a professional building. I'm concerned. I think part of the problem is when we start talking numbers, people get those numbers stuck in their head. And, and until we design and build and we have a, a price that we can tell the community, I'm just very uncomfortable with that. There are people who claim they can do it. It came out to about 200 a square foot. One of the builders said, you know, it's about 175 a square foot, as long as you don't bring an architect into the picture. But as soon as you start designing it, the costs go up. So one of the things that I understand clearly is council is frugal and it would not be a Taj Mahal. It would not be a overly ornate building. We have that in our community already. We have two beautiful community centers. We have this old, this clubhouse here. The historic clubhouse that is actually being rented in next month. So we've got this, there is going to be weddings and parties in this building starting next month. Very, very excited about that. And then we have our rec center, beautiful building, meeting spaces, kitchen. We have great facilities. We need a, a nice building for a city hall. So it doesn't need to be 450 a square foot possibly, but is it 200 a square foot? Let me go find out.
I have a quick, oh, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Oh, you go right ahead.
A quick clarification. I thought you said earlier that we do have enough funds for the CMAR, at least the first step of option three, not the, the design part, not the building. Is that correct?
The, the design part, yes. We have a million dollars. We have, Rudy, help me out. I believe it was 400 and something for the Sixth Street and almost a little over 600 for the, for the building across the street.
Well over, well, I shouldn't say well, but it's over a million dollars. I got a thumbs up.
Comes your backup.
I got a one thumbs up from one person and another person.
No, it's more like 850,000 because the original, the, the Sixth Street was 300. And then we got 560 after closing another cost over here.
So what are you proposing to spend to move this forward?
I'm not proposing anything yet. With that direction, we'll go contracted out and we'll find out what the cost is going to bring. We'll bring back the CMR back to council to help make that decision. But I, I need to budget that money for next year because that, you know, I won't get it done in two months. So I need to direct Kirsten to set that up in the preliminary budget for you guys to discuss later this month. If we can, if you want to hear from Mr. Hozerman, our public works manager, who, you know, will be running this kind of project and, and can give you an insight. But I believe if you want to build a $10 million city hall, 5% or 7% of that.
Yeah. So to, to give you an idea, and, and I'm going to use the, the $12 million number, at 6% would be $750,000.
Well, I'm just saying, if we're going to spend $750,000, I want to see a city hall.
Absolutely.
That is the plan. That is what option three is. That, that's going to be to, to design your city hall for the community city hall on city property. That, that's not a bubble diagram. That is the actual build out design.
Yeah, with the CM, sorry, with the CMAR process, we would bring back to council what we call a GMP, which is a guaranteed maximum price in that proposal.
Along with financing?
Or how to pay for it? Yes, because then we'll have a ballpark of how much it's going to cost us, so we'll begin to talk to the bonding folks about that. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mayor, counsel. One of the features of the CMAR process is you're getting a contractor and a design professional involved at the outset. So you are contracting and paying for those services, but that gives you a more informed design, a more buildable design. That's the theory, and that's been the experience, and that's why people that use the process are fond of it.
Counsel, any other questions for staff while they're nervously pacing the podium? All right. We need to get some kind of direction here to Ron and his team, so... Correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm hearing counsel heading towards option three. Are we going that way? Two, one head nodding.
Okay, I'm going to get on board with that. Well, we need to do something. We need to get off the pot. We do. And we're going to have to bond it. I wish we could save money and put it away and pay for it. It's just not going to happen. Like I said, we're getting in the way over here. We are. We need to move along and do something. We're growing, and if we don't move on this now, it's going to cost the city of Cottonwood a heck of a lot of money later on, a lot more than it is today, just like it was today a lot more than it was two years ago.
I agree, Councilmember Matthews. It's not my preferred option, but I think it's still an option that's going to wind up benefiting the city and community greatly down the road. Yeah, so I would go that direction if the majority counsel pleases.
With option three, are we talking about using CMRA?
Yes, sir. CMAR, yes, sir. Yes, is that correct? Yeah.
Do we have any idea where we would put a new City Hall? Are we still talking the park?
So we'll bring that back to council to discuss, you know, which location as we move through the process. Really, we have two, and again, if David wants to expand, two good areas. One is back here, and the other is Seventh Street. The issue back here is that'll be space away from the park or parking, and so if we can fit on Seventh Street, we have the Public Safety Building, you know, we have the library, we have the rec center, we have the courts, all right there. So it puts us right in the center of everything else. Back here, I think it's a beautiful site, and it could have shared parking, but if you've been in Old Town recently, even at lunch, the parking's getting pretty bad. And so the thought is to put a town square back here, an event center area, small, you know, grassy area for a traditional square, is what I would be proposing, and then we figure out parking for the rest. I believe we can have parking, and we have a little flood zone areas back there closer to the wash. We can put parking back in the area and, you know, make that safe and have a nice town square if council, if it so pleases. So all that for, we'll come back for, you know, a vote on, you know, which location, but Seventh Street seems to make the most sense if we want out of Old Town.
Mr. Rosenzweig, I saw you had your hand up. Did you want to address the council?
Counsel, appreciate the opportunity, appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. I just had the opportunity to work with the city on selling the old bank building across the street, the old financing building. I really enjoyed working with the city on it, but put a few more dollars in the cover. I just wanted to throw a few comments here, just from my perspective, having worked in this community for a long, long time. Some of you may know the history of these buildings that we're talking about now. There was a ranch family that sold their ranch, one of the major ranches in this area, and they dumped a lot of money into the building. My closest I can come is about $12 million. It was designed by an international architect, and they just overspent. I mean, even in its present condition, they're already up to $12 million. They lost it to foreclosure. So the hospital picked it up at a bargain price. That's why the price got down so low, way below the cost. And of course, it could have been purchased earlier if people had said, hey, let's grab this thing, but nobody went for it. Now we have a situation where it's back up again after several possible opportunities. The building is a beautiful building. It's something that the city could be proud of for many, many years. It's in a good location. I know there's always questions about financing, but as Richard pointed out, the interest rates are unbelievably low right now, if somehow we could take advantage of that. But even at the price of 4.6 million for what it is, it would cost a lot more to replace that even now. So granted, it's an expenditure, but this opportunity is not coming around again. If it doesn't go to the city, it'll probably go to something, perhaps some kind of a retirement facility or something like that. I mean, there are other ideas that Richard has in mind if this doesn't work. So my feeling is that before the city throws this away and starts on something new, it would be better to look at what's right in front of them, because even though it's 50,000 square feet, and we only need 30 now, you know, the community's going to grow, we're going to need 50,000 square feet or more before too long. So I just wanted to throw in those tidbits here. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Rosenzweig.
Mayor, if you wouldn't mind, Richard wanted to make a suggestion to the council, if they'd like to hear it.
Sure. Mr. Whitney, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, just in full disclosure, our last speaker may be a part of the deal on that building, so I just want to make sure that council either asks or knows that he might have financial involvement in that cell of that building, so... Okay. Well, and Rick, I do appreciate your comments, and I do agree with you. I really do. There's just seven of us up here.
Yes, sir. Mr. Whitney.
Again, thank you. We would be willing to help with the park in Old Town with lighting, amphitheater, help with build-out if that would, you know, if you chose to go with a Rough Cut building. We'd be willing to do that as a gift to the city of Cottonwood. Just a thought to put out there, that we would be willing to do that. We want to see Cottonwood grow. We're going to make a big investment here, and we want to see a beautiful City Hall. We want to see Cottonwood grow and become the city that it can be. So, thank you.
All right, so, Ms. Wildon?
I move to direct staff to issue a request for qualifications for a construction manager at risk to design and build a new City Hall on city-owned property to be identified.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Wildon made the motion. Councilmember Kurat seconded it. If we could, please have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurat?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hals?
Yes.
Mayor Linsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Next is, I move to pay the claims and adjustments?
Second.
All right. Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Henry seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
And I move to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Wildon seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourned. Thank you.